One day, twenty-sixth, twenty-fifteenth, South Bend County Council is now in session. The introduction tonight by Reverend Felicia Williams. Therefore, Vice President Oliver Davis.
Let us pray. Good Lord, thank you so much for being here tonight. We ask of your wisdom on our city council and our city administration as you make decisions for the city of South Bend, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Josh, President. Every day. Always the best response. Doctor's a book. President. Vice President Oliver Davis. President. Councilman White. Mr. Furley. President. Mr. Fordy. Thank you. May I have the report from the State Committee on Minutes? The South Bend Council, if the city of South Bend has been catching up to the 2013 junior meeting in the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Dieter, David Clark. Most of the second on favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Special business, thirteen fifty-five. Thirteen fifty-five. A resolution of the South Bend County Council honoring District Eleven South Bend Senior League Girl Softball Team, the 2013 Softball World Champions. All right, thank you. Councilman Henry Davis. Sure. Someone would like to read that? And your name for Councilman Davis will be Councilmember Valerie Shea.
Ladies, would you like to join me up here? So, Council, I present to you a resolution of the... Can you hear me?
No. My mic is not prepared this way.
It's not prepared. There we go. I present to you a resolution of the South Bend Common Council honoring the District Eleven South Bend Senior League Girl Softball Team, the 2013 Softball World Champions.
People are taking photos. If you can come up here if you want to take a better photo.
Whereas the South Bend Common Council recognizes that for the past eight seasons, the South Bend Senior League Softball Team has represented USA Central in the World Series and whereas the Common Council further recognizes that Saturday, August tenth, in Sussex County, Delaware, the District Eleven All-Stars, representing players from all South Bend schools, New Clary and Marion High Schools for Central USA and the entire country, played in a D title game of the Senior Little League Under Sixteen Softball World Series. And whereas the city council is especially proud to recognize that District Eleven South Bend Senior League Girl Softball Team included Caitlin Stokcinski, Nicole Cook-Patrick, Melissa Hicks, Kelsey Keelman, Madeline Mulgdon, Hannah Andreziak... I apologize. Alisa Gutierrez, Veronica Rodriguez, Ashton Woods, Shannon McCarthy, Tori Friedrich, Megan Bonk, Brooke Vissmessi, Cole Srebec, Desiree... I'm sorry. Megan Sink, manager Derrick Hicks, coach Matthew Cook-Patrick, and coach Jesus Gutierrez. This team beat West three-zero to advance to the World Championship Game, which was nationally televised on ESPN. The championship game pitched the District Eleven South Bend Team, representing all of the United States, against a team from Milano, Italy, representing Europe and Africa. The teams were tied going into the bottom of the fourth inning when the hard work, dedication, and talents of a great team were displayed when District Eleven All-Stars scored further runs and then held the Italian team scoreless for the rest of the game and went on to win by a score of five to one, capturing the world title. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana is especially proud to publicly honor and recognize the 2013 World Champions, the District Eleven South Bend Senior League Girl Softball Team. Section two, the Common Council congratulates each and every member of this World Championship Team, their manager Derrick Hicks, their coaches, their parents, and all of their friends and family members, and all of the many sponsors who supported these academic softball players in so many ways, both on and off the field, so that they could pursue their dream and bring home a much deserved World Championship to South Bend. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approved by the mayor. I submit this to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilman Henry Davis?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think that happened beyond my control, and that's why I'm late. But I really wanted to commend these young ladies on their exceptional performance of school year, I mean, this summer. As a matter of fact, it was Desiree.
She wants to be there.
That's not good. You know she's my first cousin. Yeah, so I was looking forward to that, but anyhow, anyway, what happens is that we hear so much about our youth and how bad our youth are and how, you know, just negative stuff all the time, and so when you have, like, World Champions, not state, not local, World Champions, that's phenomenal. That's phenomenal. So I always will say, "Mr...." It was like the only time that you ever get that, like, if you go to the Olympics, right? So you're the best of the best. So keep it up. And one thing I didn't, was unable to do, was find out what schools you wanted to know to spread out, which is a good thing, but also I wanted to make sure that you, um... Coach, where you at?
There you go. There you go.
What I wanted to make sure is that you guys received something in commemoration as well from the council, and by the way, you have a plaque that says, "The Common Council receives South Bend, Indiana's proud to honor, recognize District Eleven South Bend Senior League Soft Girl Softball Team for their hard work, dedication, and talents as 2013 South Bend World Champions." So this is for you.
Council, on you. Anyone want to speak in favor of this? Mayor?
I'm pleased to speak in favor of this resolution. We're extremely proud of these girls and everything they've done for several reasons. One, as was mentioned before, just terrific when we had something very positive to talk about with young people in our community. Secondly, we really stress having world-class things in our city as part of how we fuel our comeback, to make sure that we have people and entities and schools and businesses and our athletic competitions that stand out on a global scale. And third, we're very proud of the tradition that you're part of, that is girls and women's athletics in South Bend. So this is the home of Skylar Diggins, this is the home of the Symmetra Tour, the LPGA, this is the home of American Youth Home Parade, and here's one more fantastic example of how our community has the best of the best when it comes to women and girls athletics. So we're proud of you. Keep it up, and thanks for worshiping great credit on the city of South Bend.
Reverend Greg Brown, 12th day of the diamond. Huge pastor here in South Bend. It cries my heart out just to see this and to be a part of this era. A lot of people say, "You just said that because Skylar Diggins is your cousin." I don't know any of these ladies, but I did get a chance to view and watch and follow them. This is a great accomplishment. It's such a present for the city of South Bend, when they said we was a dying city. Thank God for the mayor, even the support, and knowing that we have somebody to support since it means a lot to me. Congratulations, ladies. Anything else?
Really. Parents is here, no one wants to talk to say anything. Coach?
All right. Thank you. Any opposition? Start with Mr. Scott.
Let me say there. Congratulations. We are very proud of you. Just remember this. Look at what you've achieved. You can do this in anything in life. So good luck with everything you do, and remember that.
Dr. Furley?
Congratulations. I'm envious. I've never won a city factory. Congratulations.
Dr. Byer?
Congratulations to you. If I remember reading the articles correctly, did you come from a loser bracket, too? You lost one? Nothing. I mean, I thought there was a loss in there somewhere.
There was one.
Okay, there was a loss in there somewhere that didn't commit us to your race. You came forward, and I think that you did come back when your disappointment is something that will carry with you for the rest of your life. So congratulations and good luck.
Oliver?
I'd like to say congratulations. You can see how many people are following you on my Facebook just now when you all were on. I mean, you can go to everybody's Facebook, and they're just following and everything, and just comments all over. And so that was just an indication to me how many people throughout the city of South Bend were really cheering you on through social media and through every other way that we feel those who could not be there with you, and they're following so many different guys. So we're very proud of you.
Devin?
Congratulations. The World Championship is phenomenal.
I'd like to thank all the girls. That's a great job, and I would like the girls, once we're all done here tonight, to thank the parents for all the new shoes you always said you'd get, the new batting gloves, the new $350 pass, all the pants you went to, all the getting up, all the traveling, all the food expense, and I thank your parents because I've gone through that with my sons. It was a phenomenal opportunity, and again, like Councilmember Scott, take this and any other venture, if you decide to go on softball, whatever you want to do in your life, you can do it, once you put your mind to it. Again, the coaches, all the work, extra practices, BP, everybody, all that, get all the new stuff every time. So please, when you go out tonight, make sure that you give your parents a hug and thank them for all the hard work, and I hope to see you guys all in college rosters in three years. Is it two years? Two years? All right. So Councilman Davis, your recommendation is?
I ask that you take this as a full affirmation, sir.
All right. All in favor? Aye. I'm glad you made another job. 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 I'd like to make an announcement that tonight, Representative City Administration, will be Chief of Staff, Captain Ruth. Also, I'd like to make an announcement, if anyone here tonight is for the lawn parking ordinance, that will be postponed until September ninth, so anybody that was here for that, it won't be heard, but you can certainly stick around and listen to everything else if you want. Also, tonight, in the report at city offices, we are back on schedule with Mayor Pete, who will come to this council every second meeting of the month and give us an update on what's going on in the city. It will be a ten-minute presentation by the mayor. There will be ten minutes of questions from the council, and we will probably end this when that ten-minute session is over. So Mayor Pete, the microphone is yours. Fire away.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for this invitation. It was a great idea to create, once a month, an opportunity for me to update members of the council on what's new with the administration in a formal setting, and so when I received word last week that we were going to restore the reports at city offices, I was very glad for that and look forward to having that back on the calendar. I think it's a great opportunity to boost the communication between the council and the administration, and appreciate all the efforts that are going on in that regard. A few recent things I want to update the council on in the city. First of all, on Saturday, we had our first City of South Bend Employee Picnic. It was an apt day to have it, because if you opened the paper on Saturday, you saw that there were a couple of letters to the editor that were thanking, were normally thankless tasks to the waterworks as well as the police and fire department for different things that they had done benefiting citizens and businesses in our community. So it was nice to be able to say thank you to our many city employees about holding that event at Kohl Wescue Stadium. I want to thank our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the South Bend Silverhawks for making that possible, and we hope to continue to do that from year to year, because it's a great chance to get the city team together. I was somewhat surprised that no council members lined up at the dunk tank opportunity. I can tell you that was unexpectedly, then we aim and put arm strength among the children of some of our city employees, who managed, between them, to put me in the dunk tank probably ten or twenty times, but it was all through united way and all in good fun. And if you'd like to give me a rep, we'll be sure we extend that invitation next year as well. And of course, council members, I'm sure, would be warmly invited to take their place in the dunk tank as well during the upcoming following picnic. We had a meeting last week in the Anti-Violeance Commission. It was the third meeting of the commission, open to the public, and an opportunity for those members of the commission who participated in a training at John Jay College in New York to share some of the findings and lessons that were learned with the broader commission. I know that Councilperson White, who's the council representative on the commission, is interested in creating a more detailed opportunity for us to, and she couldn't be here tonight, but I want to create an opportunity for us to get an update to the council, since I know there's an interest on this. So we'll look at a way to do that, maybe in a committee meeting to come. But just by way of a quick report, that council, which is chaired by Police Chief Teachman and Reverend Eddie Miller, has continued to develop the group violence reduction strategy after the pattern of what's been applied in a number of cities through the national network of sort of communities. I want to stress that routine law enforcement, of course, is continuing. This is a way to bring a focus strategy, following social network analysis of the gangs and groups most likely to be involved with violence, and targeting our resources there. For those more interested in the strategy, I would urge familiarizing themselves with the book Don't Shoot, which documents a lot of the history and development of that strategy. And also want to thank the different community institutions that have come together to help us bring in some technical support in that first stage of the strategy, which include Memorial Hospital, St. Joe Regional Medical Center, the African-American Community Fund, the Community Foundation, Notre Dame, and the Community Foundation of St. Joseph County. Another important piece of news was the introduction of the Open Data Portal, a big part of how we're trying to advance transparency in South Bend, with help from Socrata, which is a company that provides us with our data software for the city and the Code for America fellows who are about halfway through their engagement. We will have data.southbend.in.gov. Hopefully, while at a chance, if not, I would encourage you to spend a little time on the website. It's the very first version, it's 1.0, so right now it has 12 datasets and 10 GIS maps, but that could grow up by a factor of 10, and we hope it will. There's an option on the website for members of the public to suggest other datasets they think would be a good idea. I mean, this is, I would imagine that council members will have added insight on some datasets that would be productive to put online. One of the other things is to reduce the expense and effort associated with applet request, because so much more of the information is just out there for citizens and journalists to get on their own before they even have to come into our legal department requesting data. So we hope to add more and more information to that. Also, I know the council is aware of this, but just want to stress the importance of tomorrow's public meeting that the EPA is going to hold concerning Bex Lake. We know that they've been testing and doing some evaluation of the area. I have asked them to come in earlier this summer to show them what they knew so far, but they indicated a lot of their testing wouldn't be done until August. So now that August has come, we're glad that they're back to reveal to us what they've found and what steps we might need to take to be sure that we're being responsible in terms of environmental and safety concerns, and they will, I'll be there as well, listening to their presentation at four o'clock tomorrow at the Charles Barack Center. A number of members of the committee were able to be there for the initial presentation on the budget, August fourteenth, focusing on job creation and cutting overall spending by 3.4%, while funding our key priorities, reimagining our streets, balancing the general fund, maintaining our cash reserves, and we hope preserving our best-in-state bond rating, the best of any Class II city in the state of Indiana. A difficult balance, and I want to commend our team on the work they've done to get that initial view of the budget out, even as we continue to work with members of the council within the administration to refine and improve that budget as it moves toward the deadline for passage in October. Another presentation that I think got a lot of attention and stirred some very interesting commentary in our community concerned how ever more vibrant downtown and the opportunity to rethink our streets case. Probably the most important element to that was the data and analysis that was shared by Ian Lockwood, who's regarded by many as the world's top thinker about transportation issues when it comes to downtown areas and one-way, two-way conversions. He gave a presentation at the Century Center. I just want to make sure, since not everybody was able to attend that presentation, I want to make sure it's known that the full video of that presentation is online on the City of South Bend website, and would strongly encourage anybody who is interested in some of the facts and research surrounding that opportunity, I would take the time to review that presentation and see what they had to say. Lastly, I want to stress, and I hope there will be opportunities for fiscal officers to speak, but there is a very important mid-year budget transfer coming up this evening. This is something that was delayed once in the past, so the council members could have more time to take some of the information on board. It was first submitted on July seventeenth, we reviewed it with first reading on July twenty-second. It was scheduled for a committee meeting on August seventh, and then we looked to a committee meeting on August twelfth as well to try to share more information about the mid-year budget transfer. Now being the twenty-sixth, I'm a little concerned that some may wonder how mid-year the mid-year transfer is going to be if it doesn't get action today. I appreciate there's a lot of information, but also know that council members have been committed to doing their homework and reviewing the data that's been brought before them, and look forward to sharing any information needed. We've made sure some fiscal officers are able to be here tonight to share any information that would be helpful to council members ahead of taking action.
About two minutes, Mayor.
All right. I will, you balance my time.
All right. Thank you. We'll begin with Mr. Gavin Furley and work our way down.
No questions.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
No questions. I'll just try. I've noticed a moment.
Dr. Furley?
Thank you.
Then we go to Ms. Valerie Shea.
Mayor, you had mentioned the anti-violence work that Chief Teachman was working on. Well, I think that would be really helpful is also this afternoon, Chief Teachman met with us to talk a little bit about the new chronic ordinance, chronic nuisance ordinance person. Have there been any real lines in the police department in terms of, I understand there's a burglary. If you would be able to provide an update, if there has been realignment of duties in the police department, that'd be helpful.
Sure. Are you asking specifically with regards to the anti-violence strategy or just generally whether there have been any alignments? Okay. That'd be, I can get with Chief Teachman and try to generate an update.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Reverend Davis Jr.?
Sure, thank you. Back for your presentation, and no, I was not actually getting a dunk thing, because I was like, "I didn't." And so next time it's looking like that goes on, I'll be more than willing to be a part of something like that, that sounds like it's on.
Good. We'll settle it up.
Yeah, I'm just, well, yeah, let's make it happen. But, you know, on a serious and more serious matter, I'm paying attention to a lot of the different things that are going on with the budget and how you're trying to, I guess, balance and make sure that we're operating more efficiently and with obviously less. And I have to, like, you know, in my curve of what your government should be, everybody wants to operate like a business, not necessarily think government is a business, the government is a circus, and sometimes you're going to end up in a red, which is a part of it. But one thing that I'm really looking at, because of the way you're doing this, and I'm not in total agreement with it, we probably really need to start looking at, obviously, several years down the line, as what relates to how much money we're getting in profit taxes, where obviously on an aggressive vacant abandoned plan that calls for another demolition at, you know, at a high rate on this coming week. Given those elements, I think the conversation now needs to turn into de-tipping. I think if we begin to de-tip, we can correct a lot of things that are going on. I don't like to see more people entering to the unemployment line. I don't want to see more people not be able to feed their families. I don't want to see more people just be unemployed. And because folks are unemployed, and we already have a 4% unemployment rate, I think it only makes sense to begin to look at de-tipping. For a number of reasons, but for reasons of school preparation needs money. They always say that they're wrong. They probably are. I haven't looked at their budget. However, what I do know is teachers haven't received a raise in over five, six years. So that would constitute more dollars in there until our libraries. We ended up, you know, having a little wars, protests, et cetera, to make sure certain branches stayed open, and still those branches still have really shaky hours. So if we begin to de-tip, we can stay in the employee bases, City of South Bend, talking about the employees that we support. But not only that, our entities will be able to gain a stronghold on, um, on a, an increase of dollars, a future dollars. Now, I'm not saying doing it in a irresponsible way. I understand 30% of those school corporations, 30% that go to libraries, etc. But what I am saying is that because of over 40% of our city is locked up in tip districts, chances are, we may be able to rebound at a higher rate and a faster rate because of that by de-tipping. We stretch, you know, our TIF district, this little small, what is it called, airport TIF district, all over the city. We stretch it. And including, it's hurting us. It's not working for us, it's hurting us. And the people that can make a bigger gain off of it are these developers. They usually don't deliver. So we have to rethink the way we're doing stuff. De-tipping, and I will, we can talk about this more, but de-tipping is the way to go. We have to return the money to the taxpayers. We have to.
Well, certainly I welcome the opportunity to have a discussion about when it's appropriate to retire a TIF. I do think it's important that there be public understanding, and I'm sure you understand this, but I think some people may not be aware, because I hear statistics that 40% of South Bend is in a TIF, they think that means that 40% of our assessed value is being diverted into TIF. And the number is really closer to 10%. I know you'll, but some folks who don't follow it as closely as you and I do may not be aware of that, so I just want to make sure that's understood. There's certainly an attraction to retiring TIFs that have outlived their usefulness because it can free up resources for schools and libraries. The city, according to the last estimate I've heard, would only see about 40 cents on the dollar. So it's also the case that our overall city incoming resources would shrink if we were to do that. But of course, it would remain in the community going through libraries and libraries and other entities. I would say that my view is that TIF is probably the most flexible and powerful job creation resource we have. And most of the 10 some, 10-plus million dollars in private investment and hundreds of jobs that have been announced this year, for example, through the work of the Department of Community Investment, had been connected in some way to projects that are in back with TIF dollars. So they're certainly being put to use in order to create jobs, and that's why we have them.
Because our unemployment rate continues to rise.
Okay.
And it continues to rise, I would challenge you on that. The number's gonna lie, mayor. We had a 4% unemployment rate, we had 11% back in the early spring. It continues to do this. So you have to, we have to look at what's going on. I mean, no, that's not happening.
Right, so again, what I'm saying is the job creation that's taking place has been associated with TIF afterinvestments in many cases. Certainly, I open to a dialogue on what the right level is and whether we should set some kind of target, that we shouldn't go below or above on how much of our assessed valuation is reserved for TIF. But I hope we don't deny ourselves as a city the effectiveness and flexibility that comes with TIF as a job creation tool. So I would welcome that dialogue.
Okay, thank you. Officer Scott.
Just more of a comment than really a true question. Did shake up the First District with your announcement of two-way street proposal, especially with Liever Park. And I, the one thing that happened in a lot of those conversations that I've had with First District members is more non-understanding. So I'm glad you guys put up on the website the whole presentation, and I hope there's opportunity to present to us again, you know, as part of a new meeting, but also to the public, I've been working with Scott on trying to do something within the First as well. You know, seek to understand, I know it's a complicated subject matter, I definitely would like to see financials on how this is going to roll out, if it is going to roll out, and what the proposal is financially. So I look forward to more information on the two-way street program. I think it is essential to downtown and outer lining areas, but we all need to understand it's not an easy solution. It is a complicated matter that we all need to address.
Thank you.
Let's come inside here. We have two minutes left. I have my questions here, question for you. So thank you very much. Again, all council members, if you do have questions and you want to dialogue with the chair, you may contact him 24/7, all cell phone. And then my other, again, thank you. We will get our task, I think, probably when the budget is over for the officers of the council to meet with the mayor more regularly, so thank everybody for their input, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right now, may I have a motion to resolve in the committee as a whole? All in favor? All right. I'm gonna stay right here. With the council's permission, I'm gonna have to stay right here. And thank you. And we will have the committee of the whole to begin. The committee of the whole is an hour-long session. This is a portion of the council meeting where the council sits as a committee. Proposed ordinance I read is not caught only by City Clerk John Wharton. Your folks are then verbally given by the chairperson of the council standing committee, to which the proposed ordinance was sent for advisory review and recommendation. At this time, we are now here on bill number 3313, Mr. Moore.
Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the City of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2013.
Motion to hear the substitute version?
Subway.
Yes, do you have a committee report?
Second.
Oh, second. Second, on substitution. Do you have a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For now, we have our committee report. This is Mr. Chairman, we do. The personal finance committee had a public hearing on substitute bill 3313 this afternoon in accordance to the full council with a recommendation to continue till 9/9. Okay, thank you. This time, I'd like to hear our presenter. Please state your name and address, and you'd like to see. Mark Neil, City Controller, with offices on the 12th floor of this building. During the past four or five years, it's been a practice of the city to request department heads, fiscal staff, and city administration.
Excuse me, I think, was it the motion to continue until November 9th, not 9/9?
9/9.
I'm sorry, did I miss?
It was November 9th?
November 11th.
November 11th.
Dave Kevin was November.
November 11th.
November 11th.
With the November 11th. And that's better than the date.
If still we, you see now. But I would just, I would, the correct committee recommendation was that it be continued till the first meeting in November.
So would it be November 11th?
Yes.
We'd meet on November 1st?
Yes. Mr. Recommendation, as it was adopted in, 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 in September. Thank you, really grateful. Are we at peace, everybody here?
We're all at peace.
Good. Now therefore, may you continue on. So my, we, at the, at the last five years or so have submitted mid-year adjustments as we do an extensive review of budgets and compliance with the adopted city budget and proposed necessary adjustments. So we've submitted an amended version of bill 3313, having added some budget transfers within the Parks Department to cover the Parks Master Plan as well as to pay half the cost of a zoo master plan that would probably necessary to move the, move those efforts forward in the Parks, the master plan case, looking at a zoo, looking at a parks bond in the future, and for the zoo master plan as part of this AZA accreditation. As you look through the list that we provided, I notice they're relatively lengthy, for which I apologize, but we have asked for an extensive review. We'll do the same thing at the end of the year to make sure we are fully in compliance with the statutory requirements and requirements of the city. I would note that many of the adjustments that you see in this transfer reflect a change in our fixed asset policy, in which fixed assets, the minimum level of fixed assets has been increased, so consequently, those things that would normally have been budgeted to go through fixed assets are now going through, whether it's services or goods category, equipment category, and therefore, there are a number of transfers that you can see that talks about the budget transfers from capital accounts to other purchases accounts. There are a number of other transfers that have been put forth based upon the department heads review, again, making determinations of what the priorities are of the city, what are the issues that they need to, that they're confronted with and what they need to resolve. And so they make those difficult decisions as department leaders to determine which monies they will not spend for certain things so they can in fact take care of other matters that have been deemed, deemed appropriate. So we open to any questions on hold. Questions, comments? Starting down from, let's go down to First District.
No, sir. Second. No, sir.
I'll just repeat some of the things I had said earlier. My main concern is this creates what could be perceived the lack of transparency in spending. For example, when these budget transfers come before us identifying areas where there are budget surpluses and budget shortfalls, there's situations where the first line item here, for example, for $70,000 for some of these consulting and professional services like the ACOM Century Center study, these sorts of things I think should probably deserve a little bit more discussion before they appear on a budget transfer bill. So my issue with this bill is less the process of budget transfers and more what might be perceived as a lack of transparency with some of these developments.
A comment to that, just to, as a council member, we are, we are working extremely hard to be transparent with our, with these requests. We'd be happy to have a conversation on many of these items when they, when they do come up. We, perhaps, in, to our, to our detriment, perhaps, we try to put in as much detail as possible, knowing they would raise questions, which we are, which we really are happy to address in terms of the decisions that the departments are making in terms of their use of resources. So, and so I apologize that, that you haven't seen it in that fashion, we will endeavor to make sure that we, we are as transparent as we can be with them.
Okay. Any other questions from?
Yeah, a party clarification with regards to the bond issue. The one was related to a support for, or the one appropriation was related to support for a master plan, which was going to have a partial match from the Zoological Society. The second was potential spending for, or, can you get it?
Yeah, but potential, two master plans, there's, there's an overall Parks Master Plan, which we would be a very, a community-driven, okay, of, probably takes about six months to review all park assets, to get input from the community, get input from council and other concerned individuals about for our parks in the future. And that, that master plan becomes a blueprint as we go forward in making capital decisions, including the spending of any bonds money. Separately, we have put in a, a transfer request to provide what we estimate to be half the cost of a zoo master plan. And that zoo master plan is critical as part of our AZA accreditation, but more importantly, to make sure that we're providing a, a, a public asset that is, we hope the best it can be in our community and, and, and as professionally managed.
The reference to the bond issue then was, was a passive reference to potential bond issue, not set aside for money.
Well, we were trying to approach master plan, right, because that would be, that would be an essential, I, to a bond, and the mayor had announced this part of 2014 budget that we have a parks bond in that, I guess.
Um, Councilman Furley, Councilman President Dieter.
Do you know when the last time we had a, a park plan, when the last, when the, I could fill with probably, one sec. Answer that one?
2000, yes. He's told me before.
Question, this, when's the last time we had a parks, uh, last plan? Five years ago.
Okay. And then it kind of follows up, I think, as, rather, and we're talking about this earlier, from that five-year plan five years ago, it basically is getting a bang for the buck of doing these studies and commissions and all sudden, something to the mayor and the chief of staff in the week of the parameters that we use for that, and again, we, from my knowledge on the council, we have never developed a, basically a spreadsheet that we're doing all these studies and we paid all this money, what did we get out of it? And again, I think that was some of Valerie's frustration of these things being put in there. And again, the transfers, they're not new allocations of money, but they're transfers and it didn't kind of match to that extent, so. But I will get with you later on that thing, that's, I think that's one of the confusing questions and or answers that we're looking at of, of the studies, why was it lumped in with this? Like, because of the transfer and all that. But that's a whole other subject, and we'll do that later, but that was my question. If we're doing a five-year plan every year and we're spending all this money, why? Why aren't we adapting to what the plan was before because we don't do another plan? So if we're doing it just for the sake of an exercise, I think that's a huge waste of money. If we're going to do it, let's adhere to what the plan is and go from there. So we don't need comment, that's, I'll get with you.
Thank you. Officer Davis.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt my comments, my time period. I wanted to recognize the fact that I, what, I am a strong supporter of Zoological Society and what they bring to the table. I offered the resolution and obviously it was passed before our permission from council. So I don't want to make it seem like I'm not in support. So after Oliver finishes his comments, I would like to offer a motion, actually. I don't know if that, I think it would be a recommendation. Yeah, and I would like to offer a, a recommendation.
Okay. We still have to have a public hearing and everything else, and we'll come back with it. Again, you heard my concern and the question, and but could you just sort of, like, show your rationale again as why you love the zoo with this plan because of the fact that you really had been having separate meetings to discuss those kind of matters with the zoo and everything, and then it was kind of caught us in terms, since we deal with South Bend, and, you know, it was the third ball that we started this way, and we just wanted to explain that.
Again, as I mentioned, councilor, they take a personal responsibility for having put it in as a budget transfer rather than as an appropriation. And, and we, when we submitted, we did try to highlight it, and the reason for that was, and just in an effort to be good fiscal stewards, rather than appropriating new monies or additional monies, we said, let's take a look at our budget, where might we have resources that we don't believe we're going to use this year, or probably are not going to spend, or we're going to make a decision not to spend in order to fund the, this important Parks Master Plan and Zoo Master Plan work out of existing resources rather than additional resources. And that is, and that is truly the only reason that we give it to a transfer rather than through appropriation, is just trying to use existing resources.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, one more question? Go ahead.
Can I ask in terms of the Parks Master Plan, two years ago, I think 2000, three years ago, 2010, the council had approved a $250,000 plan for Miracle Park. Where, how did that relate to, to this plan, and where is that money today?
So a good deal of that money was not spent. It was, it was, it was unspent money, it was returned back to the Parks Fund. I think Phil of St. Clair, Phil Parkland, give you a, just a longer answer, I have the activity regarding Miracle Park.
We did ask the council for a $200,000 appropriation in the summer 2011. It was part of our master plan. One of the things that we've done is we've been looking at the, at the access that we have for all kids in our parks. We started off with the project, the Parker Rodney, that we were very fortunate to get funded through Central Community Foundation, the Calhoun Foundation. We've been working with District 11, Little League, also with regards to finding a location for them for Miracle Field. And we've, where we've been up to date with our studies is that, you know, we've, we've put a feasibility together, but what we have to do now is we have to lock down the actual property. Once we've established the property, and we're working on that internally, but once we establish the property, we're going to go ahead and finish the plan, and at that point in time, we'll be ready to move forward. But we still, by now, need to find land, and that's, that's been our major stumbling block. And so we're working on that. We hope to ask some answers to the council very soon, but that's, that's where we're at. And I think that the good thing is, is about the studies, that we've got a lot of folks involved in the process, we've met with a lot of different folks in different agencies that have given us great feedback on the type of field, the type of park they're looking at, so we got, we got some good information, we just got to get some land.
So, so of that $200,000, a big portion of, is it, is still remaining?
Well, again, a lot of the studies have been done and the needs have been done. I think I was prepared to discuss that tonight, but I think we spent about 115 of that $200,000. We won't spend a year more until we have land, but what we need to spend from this point on has to be spent after we've identified land and have finished committing to the project.
Okay. Um, little other questions? Part of discussions that I know you and I've had, I guess my request would be, in the way that this is handled, that if and when you identify some property, before you spend the rest of that money, you come back and identify it, rather than spend the rest of it and then come back and say, well, we just spent $200,000. Because I know there's going to be some discussions about.
I'd be happy to, I would be thrilled to come back to the council.
I don't doubt that. But I think it's important that it be handled that way, rather than, and after the fact. So again, I appreciate it.
And that goes back to the question I had, because when it comes down to either parking issues, these kind of things are actively issues that we would like to be a part of, typically transfers have already been done, kind of attitude, and so those are just, and do the same thing. So now we're on to the public discussion. We've had a nice lively, the council question. Any mighty from the public who would like to speak in favor, CL 30 is in the second, please rise, state your name, and your address, and share your thought, you have about five minutes?
I consider part of the public. Pardon me? I'm sorry. Yeah, she, you.
I'm in council. Yes, state your name and address, and a little brief, five minutes.
My name is Phil St. Clair, and I'm the director of Department of Parks and Recreation for the City of South Bend. And, sure, we'll be doing that. I do want to speak in favor of the bill. It's given us an impact on parks, we have a master plan for parks, it is our goal now on how we move forward for five years. We've been doing master plans since I've been in this position. 20 years ago, we did a master plan and wanted to build a softball complex, and we've since generated $12 million in economic impact, and we've had three...
And we've had three big teams out there and we've had the biggest tournaments out there and we've had some of the best softball players in the world play out there. Um, we're also looking to put a bid in for the International Softball Congress World Championships in two years, the $3 million economic impact for one tournament. So, uh, but these things are all initiated through the master plans. We sit down with staff and we also sit down with the community. We, our prior master plans, we have a public meeting in each district and would be thrilled if each councilman, councilwoman in each district would attend these sessions because it's a great opportunity to weigh in on your thoughts regarding the parks as well as your constituent's thoughts. And, uh, we take all that information as well as the, uh, the in-house issues that we know with going on with parks and we try to get together a five year plan, um, an action plan, um, that, uh, will help us move forward and address those issues. Obviously, what we put in our action plan is always contingent on funding and so when the, the funding is available, we proceed with the plan. If the funding is not available and some of these things don't get finished. With regard to the zoo master plan, it's, uh, the zoo master plan is an important component of our application for accreditation with the AZA. Uh, I can't overstate enough the importance of being prepared for AZA inspection next year. I think the staff has done a marvelous job with limited resources in keeping the overall infrastructure of the zoo in great shape. Uh, there'll be a few things I'll have to do to tighten up that place for the inspection, but I think that, uh, overall, we're not doing too bad. We're relaxed right now and we're addressing that situation, it's in the leadership positions and in the strategic master plan. Uh, it's Zoological Society has been very gracious and offering to pay for 50% of the master plan. We hope it doesn't cost $100,000 for the whole plan, but it could. And, uh, uh, by being able to have a partner to help us fund this, this master plan certainly is a benefit to parks and benefit to the zoo. But we will need this component to move forward as part of AZA accreditation next year. As I mentioned earlier today, if we were to lose that, and I'm not suggesting we will lose, but if we did, we could potentially lose about half or more of our animal population at the zoo. So, uh, just, uh, want to point out the importance of the master plans and, uh, they are, as we mentioned earlier, four to six months in length to get these things done, both of them. And, uh, obviously for us, the sooner we can start, the better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Luther, 16660, Norwich Drive, Grandview, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of the Potawatomi Zoological Society, I'm an executive board member of that organization. At the meeting we had about 10 days ago, the board did not vote on appropriating the money, but the talk was very, very positive. Uh, and after the city council appropriates the money, we will definitely take a vote and move forward with that. Phil is right, it takes four to six months to complete that, that project. Uh, I know that the council has heard many, many times over the years, I was part of a couple of meetings when the accreditation issue has been brought up many times. The council working with the city administration on the vet's position, work for our advantage, the interview process is being, is taking place as we speak. Hopefully have the vet hired in the next two to four weeks. Uh, I think it's very, very important that, uh, that this plan is put in place, uh, the funding put in place for it. I hope that the council recognizes that the entire bill, I think, is important to the administration also and hope that you support that.
Six Leesmen from the Admin Finance Department at the offices on the 12th floor of this building. I'm happy that President Dieter actually has a cushion in the back of his chair in which he can rest his head, the rest of you will just have to bear with me while I talk accounting for a few minutes. I'm talking strictly to the budget transfers. I'm aware that the budget transfers have other subjects in them such as the zoo and the parks and the econ issue. Budget transfers are simply a mid-year correction in, in the way the numbers appear properly on the page. We're not asking for any more money. All we're trying to do is make sure that the actual expenditures that we've placed in the proper accounts actually have the proper budget dollars show up with them. There are two advantages to this. First of all, on, for 2013, it allows us to track properly what we've actually got in our accounts. When you folks hear the question, is it in the budget? I get the sense that you're thinking in a macro term, does South Bend have this in its budget? When somebody asks me, a fiscal officer, if it's in the budget, they're asking me about a 14 digit number and they're asking me about that specific account and they want to know, does that account have money in it to pay for the pencil that I need to buy? Those are the adjustments we're trying to cover right now. That's pretty much it. Yes, some of the numbers are big, some of the, some of the adjustments have to be made that are pretty large. I, for one, will take a full responsibility for the capital assets adjustment. I'm the one that did the financial analysis to show that our asset calculations were too low. So, we're doing a bunch of adjustments to kick the budget out of capital and put it into the small equipment where it belongs. It doesn't cost anybody a dime. It's just, it's just a correction to make it look pretty. Now, the other advantage, I mentioned, it has an advantage in 2013. The advantage for 2014 is we will now have correct numbers to look on as we continue to develop the budget for 2014. And then when we're in 2014 looking back, we can correctly see, oh, what did we do and how did our budgets compare to that? So, again, it's simply a correction to make everything balance out nicely. It doesn't cost us a dime. Thank you.
Anybody else? Those who'd like to speak against this budget transfer at this time in this bill, uh, would you please step forward and state your name and your address? And you also have five minutes. All of those who'd like to step forward, please step forward at this time.
I don't know if this microphone's working, I can't hear these people over there, but just do this, peel back a little, two or five something and then, um, I just got to say, I, you know, I'm one that's against just taking money and throwing it somewhere and hoping it lands in the right place. So, I want to applaud the council members that said, hey, we want more transparency. I use that word frequently. Uh, I have to agree that there's very little transparency when the dollars are moved from one account to another. You know, when you're talking taking money from the Century Center Fund and moving it somewhere else, but yet the Century Center's losing money every year. So, someone's going to be dropped there and found you later going, hey, Century Center needs a million dollars, you know? Well, they're taking a quarter million dollars and moving it from there to here. So, I think tracking this money is very important, transparency is very important. Um, we don't see much of that, uh, within the city and we don't get to see all the numbers you get to see. So, we have to depend on what we can dig up on the internet or maybe happen to get from our council members, um, or from this new data site, by the way, that is a good site to look up.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, seeing no one, public hearing is now closed. We come back now to the council for final comments, questions. We will start on this side. Uh, Councilman, um, Councilman, no questions.
Okay. Got it all? No questions. No comments?
Uh, I'll just make a statement and I'll reiterate what I had said earlier. Um, in my old, uh, job, I worked for IBM and, uh, there was this pattern that we saw with companies that, um, at the 11th hour of December, when, um, uh, companies would have surpluses in their budget, our phones would be laying off the hook because departments wanted to spend their money before, use it or lose it is the old saying. And I know, um, in my job in sales at IBM, I would be working, um, late on New Year's Eve to make sure that I inked all the deals before, um, the year was over so that, um, all of those dollars that department heads wanted to spend before they lost it to the New Year's budget, um, that, that we were able to, to be the beneficiary of that. So, now I'm, I'm on the other side of things now and, um, I want to be very responsible and mindful of that type of behavior. I'm not saying that it, um, it does or doesn't happen, but, um, from, uh, my position on the council and, um, my position of oversight and good fiscal stewardship, I want to make sure that we're being, uh, very responsible with, with how we budget. Certainly in December, if we see another budget transfer bill that comes before us with, um, all of these, oh, I, I don't know if the department heads might or might not buy in December, but, um, trust me, in December, I'll be looking at that, that budget transfer bill very closely too. But, my concern here is that, um, we, we see substantial amounts of money moving from, um, one account to another account and that could be an indication of departments that might be, um, potentially over budgeting, uh, which is of course something we're going through right now with preparing the 2014 budget. Um, and then conveniently having these budget surpluses in their accounts mid-year to transfer and move around, um, to cover expenses that were either unforeseen or just maybe something that, um, you know, that, uh, that a particular individual wanted to, to do and then conveniently count money in an account. And my hesitancy in supporting this bill is I do not like how that creates a lack of transparency in our spending. So, I hope that makes sense, I tried to provide some analogies, um, but that, that admires my, my concern with not 3413 and not 3513, those two bills have been very well explained and I will be, um, supporting those bills, um, when they come before us in a couple of minutes. I have some real concerns with 3313 and, um, you know, the, the budget surpluses that we see here and how these funds are moved from one account to another. So, that's my comment. No questions.
Mr. Thank you. Councilman Davis. Listen now.
No, not right, no. No, not right now. But I want to make a motion.
Okay. Um, Councilman Scott.
I'm good.
Okay. Like I said again, uh, I wish these had been two separate transfers, that's all that I would have asked. Okay. Um, now, um, those elected with motions, comments, and then Scott.
I would like to make a motion, um, that we strike everything in Bill 3313, uh, outside of the park requests, uh, and leave that in and everything else, obviously, strike those things, you know, allow the building to exist, just for the park, uh, transfer.
Okay. So, that would include, um, are you, are you understanding, um, anybody's?
Page one, since all of the Parks and Recreation Funds, everything else would be included.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Um, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second on that one?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to send 3313 to the council with a favorable recommendation. So, stupid. Second.
Do we have a vote? All, all of you say aye?
Aye.
I oppose.
Aye.
Finished? Okay. Um, we will send that one as just, just ready upon sixty-two. Okay? 3413.
3413, public hearing on a bill of the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and civic service operations in 2013 of $124,256 from General Fund Number 101, $35,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $110,000 from Motor Vehicle Highway Fund Number 202, $1,752 from Gift Donation Request Fund Number 217, $1,655,000 from EMS Capital Improvement Fund Number 288, $500 from Hazmat Fund Number 289, $40,460 from Indiana River Rescue Fund Number 291, $184,502 from County Option Income Tax Fund Number 404, and $60,000 from Economic Development Income Tax Fund Number 408.
Thank you. Do we have a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Personal Finance Committee has a committee hearing on 3413 this afternoon that comes to council favorably.
So, our presenter. Just stick your name and address.
Thank you. Mark Mesut, who's at the offices on the 12th floor of this, of this building. Um, the appropriations bill before you, Number 3413, um, has been submitted reflecting a couple of key items, specifically the, uh, additional appropriation for the fire station number five and the training facility, uh, as well as some additional monies regarding donation funds and some additional electricity costs and some other things that we've had in 2013. Um, I submitted to council committee today a revised budget showing the amounts that we expect. Who actually would like to, and definitely ask some direction from council attorney, is now the time to submit the revised amount. So, in the, uh, in the schedule, we show one point, $1,500,000 even need to cover the design and construction expense for Station Five and the Train Center. Will reduce that number to $1,309,714. That's $1,309,714, consistent with the, uh, the analysis that Chief Cox and his team have put together for the additional amounts for both Station Five and Training Facility. In addition, I would also redact to strike the parenthetical also on that line that says reimbursed through future bond. Uh, these monies will not be reimbursed through future bond, those, the other costs will be handled by the bond. So, just want to recognize that. And for purposes of members of the audience, we'll have a separate bill to, later, this half, this evening, to appropriate additional funds for the buildings that's just consistent with the bonding requirements. Uh, the council's already reviewed the bond proposal, we're not, we're not increasing or changing that amount of the bond, we're simply giving the appropriation correct, given the monies that have already been spent for partial construction.
So, yeah, there. All of you say aye? I oppose? Okay. Questions right now? Any questions? Um, I do have one question, um, and that is, when you look at, um, the appropriations for Bill 34, 35, all the way down, why did you not put them all in one bill?
Um, for, uh, Bill 3413, we handled that just as civil city funds. Bill 35, we segregate that separately for enterprise funds.
And for 41?
And for 41 and 42, uh, because we'd submit these bills earlier, we submitted 41 and 42 separately so as not to, uh, make the earlier bills more complicated, which I understand has created some challenges, but we did have their separate appropriations and that in three minutes, part of 35 and 35, we did them separately.
So, it could be classed that question only because of the wisdom that you used with that one, when you deal with the transfers or something of that nature, I would prefer you use that same kind of thing. That's all I say.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have, um, opening up for the, um, public hearing. Those who speak in favor of this bill, please rise and state your name. Seeing none, those who speak against this bill, please rise and state your name and come forward. Seeing one, the public hearing is closed. Committee.
For favorable recommendations, substitute Bill 3513.
All of you say aye? I oppose? It was carried. Bill 3513.
Public hearing on a bill of the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2013 of $82,000 from Solid Waste Fund Number 610, $180,000 from Solid Waste Appreciation Fund Number 611, $739,667 from Lumber Works Bond Capital Fund Number 623, $336,502 from Sewer Works General Fund Number 641, $274,000, $274,502 from Sewer Works Capital Fund Number 642, $1,8895 from Sewer Works Safety Fund Number 649, $2,438,88 from Sewer Works Debt Service Reserve Fund Number 653, $81,065 from 2013 Sewer Funding Bond Fund Number 644, $611,752 from Century Center Operating Fund Number 67.
Thank you. Um, do we have a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Park Works and Property Vacation Committee had a, I say Public Works, Personal Finance Committee meeting, had a hearing on Bill 3513 this afternoon that comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. But everyone, please turn off their phones and, everyone, thank you. Appreciate that. And now we have our presenter, stick your name and.
Mark Mesut, who's at the offices on the 12th floor of this building. Uh, the appropriation Bill 3513 you had before you is focused on. The appropriation Bill thirty-five thirteen you had before you was focused on some key activities of the of the city administration during the first half of the year. We had negotiated a new contract with a new facility manager for the Century Center. The nature of that contract, the Oklahoma contract was paid on a net basis. This one's paid on a gross basis, so therefore the monies that will be used to pay for food and beverage will receive, the Century Center will receive a full revenue amount, but we do need to pay for that food and beverage. So we've asked for an appropriation based on estimated spending we expect into the remainder of 2013. Additionally, we refunded, that is refinanced, two bonds in the wastewater earlier this year. It saved us about a million dollars. We've asked for appropriations here to authorize the movement of monies, the cash monies that were there, and to enable us to receive that lower interest rate and those those future interest savings. In addition, there was, there are bond proceeds available in the Water Works Department for a Pim Hook Water Treatment Plant, and those, that project was fully vetted during the year. Bond proceeds were available and the request was, as they were intended to be used for that facility, we're asking for additional appropriation without in the original budget. So we would ask for your favorable support of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions coming down as well? All right. Thank you. Now we proceed with our public hearing. Are those who would like to speak in favor of this bill, please rise and state your name. Seeing none, are those who would like to speak in opposition to this bill, please rise and state your name and come forth. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Favorable recommendation?
Second.
All in favor say aye. I oppose. It is carried. All righty. Bill forty-one thirteen.
Forty-one thirteen. Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2013 of two hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars from Century Center Capital Fund number six seventy-one.
Okay. Our committee report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Personal Finance Committee had a public hearing on Bill forty-one thirteen this afternoon, and it comes to counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Just for the record again.
Mark Neil, City Controller, Office on the twelfth floor of this building. Again related to the Century Center, in this case, the capital fund. Under the new, under the new management agreement we have with S&amp;G Incorporated, they have agreed to provide five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in capital to be used as directed at the Century Center, as authorized by the Century Center Board of Managers in this party. There's been initial work done by the the management team in requesting this amount to take care of primarily key food and beverage supplies as well as some capital goods regarding ovens and other equipment necessary, we feel, to really run a first-class facility. There's not been a substantial capital investment in the food and beverage area for a number of years, and so it's appropriate this time for us to do that. Would note that the, this is approved this evening. We'll be working through the Board of Public Works to produce a bid, set bid specs in which we would hope there'd be a number of local companies that would be able to competitively bid for various items, if not all the items that are on this list, and so we're looking forward to doing that with your approval.
Questions? Do you have a question? You said it's been a couple of years for us to do that. Is there any reason why that has taken a delay for that?
Yeah, the last time, and Dr. Warner, I think there's a little more history on the committee, on the board than I do, but the last time that a substantial, any substantial capital monies were spent were when the former management company, Center Plate, had agreed in their contract to make an investment in some food and beverage equipment. So it goes back probably six, six years at least, maybe six years ago when that happened, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Now we are ready for our public hearing. Those who would like to speak in favor, please rise and state your name and your comments. Seeing none, those who would like to speak in opposition. Seeing none, public hearing is not closed. All in favor say aye. I oppose. It is carried. Bill forty-two thirteen.
Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and civic service operations in 2013 of six million seven-four thousand thirty-eight dollars from EMS Capital Improvement Fund number two eighty-eight.
Thank you. Committee report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Personal Finance Committee had a public hearing on Bill forty-two thirteen this afternoon. It comes to counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Our presenter.
Well, finally, I, I believe my last was, yeah, there was a meeting. Mark Neil, City Controller, Office on the twelfth floor of this building. We will be amending the request to reduce the amount downward from what was submitted originally. The purpose of this request, and I'll try to keep it reasonably straightforward, is that while there's been a bond already authorized by this party for us to do the building, and we've already, early this evening, through the committee, the whole, agreed to spend additional monies for some key elements that we've added through the work of the fire department on the training facility to make it really a first-class facility. But the bonding has actually not been completed, so the monies are being spent from the two eighty-eight capital fund. We do have a sizable cash balance there, and those monies will be reimbursed. And in order to make sure we're fulfilling statutory requirements and city ordinances, we wanted to be sure that we would request, before we go to get our bonds funded, that we'd be clear on the amount of money that we would expect to have expended that will be reimbursed from those bond proceeds. So I provided to you earlier this afternoon an amount showing with monies that have been spent and are expected to be spent between now and October first of five million twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. So we'd ask for the bill to be amended down to that reduced amount. Again, to reflect that when loan proceeds and the bond proceeds are departed into an escrow account, the fire department will submit, working through the contractors, an escrow statement demonstrating the actual amounts that have been spent that should be reimbursed from those monies, and it'll be on deposit with your authorization. So we would feel a favorable approval of this request.
Thank you.
Motion to be strike with the title, the stated purpose of ten and second, on the figure of six million seven forty-one, thirty-eight dollars, and replace in all those sections five million twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two.
That's correct. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It is carried. Now, any questions that you have from the council regarding our presenter for Bill forty-two thirteen? Anybody? Seeing none, we now go to the public hearing. Those who would like to speak in favor, please come forth. Those who would like to speak in against, please come forth. Seeing none, public hearing. Okay. Please state your name and address and share your facts.
President Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight diamond. I just have a question. When you downsize that, where does the extra money go?
Okay.
He downsized, he didn't ask to come up, the downside, where does the extra money go?
He wouldn't, um, once he will, um.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, that, that.
I understand.
That's one of my questions. Where would the money go? And when we put in the escrow and use these contractors, I would like to see contractors from South Bend. I want the merit of him, um, working for the company I work for, and we go into Michigan City, which is real tough on us, council board, that fifty percent of every dollar they want back in their city. So it's hard for us to get a job. But I see Wachs down here working, and matter of fact, did they really work when the mail was in the hole? All of our systems was out there. I'm asking for the same thing in South Bend. Thank you.
And so, any others who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none this time, we'd like to have a re-battle. Comment from our presenter to share, be an answer to the question.
Yes, just to answer the question, as far as in terms of what happens to the reduced amount, the total sum that's been appropriated isn't changing. It's only an estimate of how much money we expect to spend at the time that the bond is completed. The idea is that we need to have under state statutes, we need to be able to be reimbursed for those monies, and so we just want to make sure we have the correct amount and we're not overstating. But we haven't changed the value of the contract overall. It's just simply the monies that will be, that the, you can think of that as those monies will not yet have been spent until November, December, and January, and the monies already have been appropriated by council.
And could you offer a comment regarding the issue of stock-in-contractors and things like that, or whether you were like, you know, let Chief got. Yeah, and, and to, it's kind of, many of Steve Cops, Fire Chiefs, South Bend Fire Department, twelve twenty-two, South Michigan Street. With these two specific projects, I'd like to point out that the Station Five project was awarded to Majority Builders, which is a South Bend contractor, and the Training Center facility was awarded to Zalkowski Builders, which is also a local company. So I just want to make sure you understand that we're trying our best to keep that money here at home. Okay. Thank you. The point is, I know that's true. At this time, questions, comments from the council?
For favorable recommendation, amended forty-two thirteen.
Okay. All in favor say aye. I oppose, same say.
Make a motion to continue four thirteen to December nine and send it to the Health and Public Safety Committee.
It's been moved or seconded? All in favor say aye. I oppose. It is carried. Your adjourned. Okay. I would like to ask the motion to rise and to.
Salute.
Is that be done? Thank you. All in favor say aye. I oppose. I'm done. The.
The house was bomb set for thirty-four thirty. Reading on thirty-three thirteen, please. Third reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2013.
And your motion to amend this?
A motion to amend this wasn't.
Second. The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Not for a motion for the amended version of thirty-three thirteen.
Move for the passage of thirty-three thirteen.
Second.
Reportee. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
I think he understands.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
The vote is six-two in favor.
Thank you. Thirty-four thirteen.
Third reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and civic service operations in 2013 of one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars from general fund number one oh one, thirty-five thousand dollars from Parks and Recreation Fund number two oh one, one hundred and ten thousand from Motor Vehicle Highway Fund number two oh two, ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars from Gift Donation Request Fund number two seventeen, one million six hundred and sixty-five thousand from EMS Capital Improvement Fund number two eighty-eight, five hundred dollars from Hazmat Fund number two eighty-nine, forty thousand four hundred and sixty dollars from Indiana River Rescue Fund number two ninety-one, one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and two dollars from County Option Income Tax Fund number four oh four, and sixty thousand dollars from Economic Development Income Tax Fund number four oh eight.
A motion to amend this wasn't.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Now motion for the amended version of thirty-four thirteen.
Move for the passage of the amended version of thirty-four thirteen.
Second. Reportee. Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Davis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you. Thirty-five thirteen.
Third reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2013 of eighty-two thousand dollars from solid waste fund number six ten, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars from solid waste depreciation fund number six eleven, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars from Water Works Bond Capital Fund number six twenty-three, three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and two dollars from Sewer Works General Fund number six forty-one, two hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and two dollars from Sewer Works Sinking Fund number six forty-nine, two million four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and two hundred and thirty-eight, uh, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand eighty-eight dollars from Sewer Works Debt Service Reserve Fund number six fifty-three, eighty-one thousand sixty-five dollars from 2013 Sewer Refunding Bond Fund number six forty-four, and six hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars from Century Center Operating Fund number six seven.
I move for the passage of Bill thirty-five thirteen.
Second.
Reportee. Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Davis.
Aye.
And this is eight zero.
Thank you. Forty-one thirteen.
Third reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2013 of two hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars from Century Center Capital Fund number six seventy-one.
Move for the passage of forty-one thirteen.
Second.
Reportee.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
President Davis.
Aye.
And this is eight zero.
Thank you. Forty-two thirteen.
Third reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and civic service operations in 2013 of six million seven-four thousand thirty-eight dollars from EMS Capital Improvement Fund number two eighty-eight.
Motion to amend this wasn't.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion, second, by Mr. Scott. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Now, motion for the amended forty-three thirteen.
Move for the passage.
Second.
Mr. Reportee.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
And President Davis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you. Under resolutions, can I have a motion to send thirteen fifty-four and have it continued to nine nine? Prior to that, we want to have it amended.
You would accept the subsequent bill as I filed for, sir?
Salute. Second. We have a second for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Now, a motion to send the amended version to nine nine thirteen.
And shift back to the community investment.
Community Investment Committee. All right. We have a motion, a second for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? First readings of forty-three thirteen, Mr. Reportee.
First reading on a bill corrects the legal description in ordinance eighty-five fifty-one dash ninety-four, which vacated following described property. The avenue to be vacated is described as the first two separate alleys north of Central Street, or east of East Vincent Street, running west from the west right-of-way line of Georgia Anna Street, for a distance of approximately two hundred and forty-eight feet, through the east right-of-way line of Eddie Street. east right-of-way line of Eddie Street.
Make a motion here.
Moving on forty-three thirteen, under the public works or public vacation, for certain third reading on, set second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, thank you. Forty-four thirteen.
Forty-four thirteen.
Forty-four thirteen.
First reading on a bill of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
And a motion sent this to Personal Finance, Public Works, and Property Irritation, second reading on nine twenty-three, third reading, ten fourteen.
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, thank you. Forty-five thirteen.
First reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for the purposes of defraying the expenses of several departments in the civil city of South Bend, Indiana for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty fourteen, and ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing the time when the same shall take effect.
Make a motion to send this to Personal Finance, second reading and public hearing on nine twenty-three, third reading on ten fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, thank you. Forty-six thirteen.
First reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for the purposes of defraying the expenses of the Designated Enterprise Fund of the city of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty fourteen, and ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing the time when the same shall take effect.
A motion to send this to Personal Finance, second reading and public hearing for nine twenty-three, third reading for ten fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, proceed to unfinished business, may I have a motion to send Bill thirteen fifty-six and thirteen fifty-seven to Z and A for nine nine thirteen?
Some more? Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
And the opposition, thank you. Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, under new bid with new businesses in two categories, one, an update in the meeting you've been to within the last two weeks of a board you serve, the second one, an upcoming meeting or event, does anybody have any of those?
Um, yes, as stated earlier today, um, we are moving forward with our city cemetery restoration project, and we had a good meeting announced on Wednesday. Our next meeting will be on September the twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, at five P M. at the Bryant Center, and, um, really having a really at the Bryant Recreation Center, we had a great turnout, and, um, we're looking forward to continuing to work regarding restoring the city cemetery and getting it ready for the holidays at the end of this year, so I'm thankful for that. And, um, after the transfer meeting, we, we elected our same officers, and, uh, we will be, um, in the coming year, um, talking about putting out designated bus stops, so like now the bus, you just flag down a bus and you stop, but there will be designated bus stops actually out of the city of South Bend, along, and then after that setup, there will be bus shelters at a lot of the places, at the, so first stop would be the bus stop, but there would be, so you'd be able to use GPS or other kind of computer technology to see outside the buses from your house, uh, from that standpoint, that's the goal. And then the second thing beyond that is, um, the bus shelters that will be at the places, so there were surveys run out for that, so keep in mind that you would like to still have bus stops and bus shelters with that standpoint.
Thank you, yes.
I have a question, actually.
Yes.
It's two questions, actually. A bus stop, I've already known that they were designated, I see signs out there, it's been able to see bus stop, rusty people, like, playing in like two blocks forward, waving there. Is it fact that you're reestablishing the bus stop stops, or you're actually going to enforce the rules of being at?
Good question. There are some places where you actually do see bus stops right now, it seems the signs says transfer, but, um, also with the bus stops at those places, but if you're trying, if you just go out there and you went down a bus, you can also stop at that time. And so what happens is, then you're taking a route from A to B, and you have five people flagging down the bus, and they have five different stops in five different locations, the bus has been behind, and then people are late to work, or they're late to their appointments, or they, they missed a connection, because everything goes to the transfer center, so the transfers are not connected, and then people are complaining, so this way, we, we are organized, we have a U F M system, where, uh, bus riders got a chance to respond to where they think it meets their needs, and so they're all tied in together over the last six to eight months, so there are some designated bus stops that'll be going out throughout the whole city, and then, um, the fact I haven't come at the presentation for the transport.
No, I mean, so, so are you establishing new stops, or are you going to...
It's going to be new stops all over the whole city. Some probably will still be in those same spots where you see a sign now, but there would be, because, um, the routes change, and then people commented, the riders themselves commented where they would like to see the buses, and so, and then some other neighborhood organizations, the people sit in, different things, so with all of that, there will be designated routes, so you, you should be able to say, A, B, and C, this bus is going to get here at eight forty-four, and pretty much around eight, between eight forty, twenty-four, that bus should show up.
Okay, the second question, hey, this is in, uh, the thought of, or the spirit of economic development and job role, um, one thing I do know is transportation wise having hand with obviously, uh, folks finding jobs and being able to get from point A to point B, has there been any discussion, or can there be discussion opposite of the merits of the transport, to begin a process of putting together transportation plan? Um, and if so, when and how soon can that be done? Uh, I know that I spoke with larger, people that are in larger cities, one thing that has helped, some cities, uh, expand job-wise, is because they have a twenty-four hour bus, uh, service, which allows folks obviously to get access to the bus, uh, wherever ship or wherever ship they work, because it runs all the time. So, uh, because of workers suffering now economically with jobs, has that been a conversation on how we can begin that process of, of a transportation, uh, plan?
Um, we haven't had a transport, uh, transportation summit in, um, about five years, four or five years, and they've been talking about the street car issue, but just for that issue in terms of economic development part, no, and I think that's something that I know I've talked about, and we need to have, as we look at the whole concept of streets, the changes of routes and everything else with the US thirty-one and US, um, State Route twenty-three, all of those things, so I'm hoping that we can do that within the coming year.
Or even twenty-four hour service.
Yeah.
All in favor of that? We'll stop that, that conversation, just to root to the meaning for that, so if you want to have that, that's...
Boy, this was that, has more to go.
All right, thank you. Put it to the floor, anyone who wants to speak to this council this time on something that we have not talked about, you need to state your name and address, if there's something specifically you want us to follow up, you need to fill out a form, it will be assigned to the council member, and you can give that to Fr. Fordy after you're done. Councilmember Tim Scott, we'll time you, you have three minutes, once you begin speaking.
You need one minute and...
Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight diamond. The three-one-one line communications, I would like to know the due process of it. I've called the line about two oh five east Ergerton. First of all, I want to commend Miss Valerie Shea today for coming out there. For three and a half weeks, I watched the water in front of my fiancee's house run down the street. Bob Frame came out, repaired it, the next morning water was shooting up. I called the three-one-one line first, I called the sewer, they informed me to call the three-one-one line, I called the three-one-one line, I got a call back, and they said, well, they're waiting on the tree to be removed. This Valerie Shea went out there, tried to take my mother over there for an event, the sidewalkers tore up, is that correct, Miss Shea? The gentleman told me today that I got to get in touch with Phil from the Parks and Rec to get the tree tore down before they can fix the water. She took pictures of it, left to come to a meeting, about fifteen minutes later, Bob Frame showed up, and went down in the hole, the man was getting ready to leave, he said, but Reverend, I'm not going to leave, this is a deep hole, what if one of the kids fall in? I said, that's what I'm saying, when the water comes up, they put sand, it washes down in our sewer system. So I want to know the due process in the communication, I've talked to Phil, he says, well, even in cutting the glass, if we don't get the information of the address, whether it comes from a city officer, a policeman that writes it up, I won't get the job done. So I would like to know that, I have a privilege of the floor, and my next question is, going back to when we used to have car inspection, I travel up and down Lincoln Way, uh, you got cars, one car went past, one car went by me today, and it said, it didn't even have a windshield in it. Some of them don't have bumpers, some of them don't have mufflers, I'd like to look into seeing if we could go back to the safety inspection, thank you.
My name is Samuel Brown, Public Affairs Citizens United for Better Denver, four fifteen L. T. Street, South Bend. Um, tell me where to begin. I have a six-year-old kid, which is my granddaughter, so as we see her, we watching, uh, civil rights reading on TV, and she said, Papa, why are you crying? Well, I tried to explain to her that Papa was old and not to catch part of that. The part that really needs to bring with tears, was that we got a problem in South Bend, and some of the same things that was in the news clip. I got my tea in my room, I got my tea, I got my paper, and I'm trying to trust this information now. My professor at T D C University, he wrote, uh, documentary on this, why do you have the two guys always in a low poverty area? Yeah, I call him, I'm proud to see him, because you got to be factual with you guys, I guess. The thing on two guys, I would probably be patient, I try not to get in a fight with a guy that I have a lot of respect for, I'm serious about this, and everybody's concerned, be patient, we work on, we're going to put up money, I don't care about your money, I want these things done right, and I want it in an area where it's not in a poverty-stricken area, because I want to be there when they name two guys. I remember the first one was in Chicago, and I love what I pray for, that it will be done right, and I'm tired of the excuses. You know, I put the money up, I did this, I'm talking to them, I don't even care about the money of this. Put two guys in an area of like, a good kind of, they're going to blow it down, somebody proud of that, and I want to be proud of two guys, and I'm going to fight and fight until it's done.
Yesterday, this was about seven two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I took, uh, I ran across this data site that was put up by the city, um, I didn't have ran across it, two or three days ago, and I think it just went up and running, pretty, pretty much a little site, you, you can actually go in there and track a lot of things on it, so I went on, I started looking at some of the, um, employee compensation, and, um, I know we passed some mechanism ordinances and Indiana custom laws, uh, recently, and, uh, when I'm looking through there, I find a lot of names that apparently relate to each other, and some of them seem to work directly under the other names in their departments, and, uh, one of those names that caught me as odd was Pendleton, and I ran across to Rex Pendleton, who works for Animal Control, and then I found Jonathan R. Pendleton, who is the manager of the street department, and then a John R. Pendleton, who's a manager of the sewer operations, and then a John Pendleton, who says operator general, and a Josh Pendleton, that says superintendent V. So I made a few phone calls and looked the names up, researched them, and apparently we have a father who works as a department manager, and we have a son who works as an operator or superintendent, and they're the father, and the son department, and it just struck me as odd that we have a Jonathan R. Pendleton as a manager of streets making fifty-six thousand dollars, and then we have a John R. Pendleton as manager of sewer operations making over sixty thousand a year. And all the questions I asked everywhere, and I was always told there was a father, a son John Junior, a son Josh, and a set of gentlemen, so I'm wondering who Jonathan[1770.82]